Appreciate you all taking the time to be here today with us, very much so. I'm going to begin and then I'll let you ask the questions that you have and the other commissioners have, whatever it is that they would like to say. But I would like to begin by saying that it came to my attention during another meeting that the assumption was made that the Board of County Commissioners were no longer going to be funding the Port Authority because you were a nonprofit. That is not correct. And I want to make that very clear. We consider the members of the Port Authority to be an arm, for lack of a better word, of the county government. You are appointed by the county commissioners or the city government bodies to this board. We view the role of the Port Authority to be essential in our county government. And I want you to understand that we may move back and forth with what the funding might be. We may ask questions about how you spend money and what your plans are. But we fully support this board. And I don't want you to feel in any way that we do not and that we are thankful that you are here with us as the Port Authority. And we know that in the future, and it's probably not going to be too far in the distant future, that the Port Authority, there's only two in the state of Kansas, and that our Port Authority has the ability to make some significant contributions to this county. And I am looking forward to what you guys can do in the future. I'm only going to be here for a little over a year more, but I think that my fellow commissioners to the huge, large extent agree with me. And so if you have questions for us or concerns, bring them to us. Nobody asked, I don't think anybody reached out until after the fact to ask whether or not we planned on cutting funding to the Port Authority. And that was never the intent. Yes, the conversation was that we might be cutting funding to nonprofit organizations. And I understand that you've kind of fallen into that category, but you are also essential to the operations that we have right now. So, that being said, we'll begin the meeting with questions and...
No, that's enough. I move to adjourn. I've heard enough of this. Let's get out of here.
... And that's from listening to your meetings, especially your budget hearing when that final day of approving the budget, the Port Authority was thrown out and it was a three to two vote to provide funding. There's two commissioners that voted against funding the Port Authority. So, when I see that, then I'm questioning, okay, do they really support it? The other thing, too, is I've heard from some of the commissioners that we need to come up with different ways of funding, that we're tired of just writing a check. You guys need to come up with some different methods of how you're going to be funded. So, I guess when I start putting those together, in my mind, and this is Greg, this isn't the rest of the board, but a lot of it's coming from me is, okay, I'm really questioning the support of the county commission. Do they want us or are they going to defund this? And when I hear the resolution you passed that I think any outside agency that receives a majority of the support or more than 30 percent of the support from the county, they will have, the county will have a representative on their board. I see things like that. I hear comments, "We're not funding any outside agencies anymore." So, some of this is coming from me and what I'm hearing, and I'm probably interpreting too much.
What's wrong with that, having a representative on your executive board of the LCDC? LCDC is what we're talking about.
But this is the Port Authority.
I know, I know, but as you know, there's a lot of intermingling and that has been a conversation about when we're giving a nonprofit corporation, which is, and the money for that nonprofit corporation is routed through the Port Authority. They make their application to you and then you fund them. So, that's why it is pertinent to discuss with you guys. And there, to my mind, when the county's giving such a large portion of the funding, there's no reason at all why the county shouldn't be represented on the executive committee. We've had several things that have come up where we haven't even known what's happening and we've been taken aback by, oh, that's happening, that's happening. And we haven't been informed. And I think that's the reason we wanted to know that we had somebody on the executive committee. And we have an economic development person now at the county. I don't see why he can't be incorporated into the executive committee of the LCDC.
But that's a question to them, not to the Port Authority.
I know, but I think the Port Authority should take a position on that.
The Port Authority has not taken a position because it didn't deal with us.
Well, you're funding them.
I think, and I'll let Jeremy address it since he's in charge of LCDC, but I think part of the issue is, okay, if the county has a representative, then all of the cities should have a representative, too.
All the cities aren't funding to the level what the county is funding.
So, what's that funding? If you fund this amount, you get one. If you don't...
Well, when you're providing a lot more funding, I think we have a seat at the table.
I think it was a matter of to keep the executive committee lean and me and not to have 10 people on executive committee. And they felt, and I don't want to speak for Jeremy, but I think if the county has a seat, I think the cities should have a seat, too, for providing funding.
Well, the cities haven't, if the cities haven't requested a seat, then that's not an issue, is it? We have.
Oh, and that's, Greg's exactly right. That's the main concern of LCDC with adding a seat for the counties. Then you effectively open yourself up to seats from everybody else and it kind of defeats the purpose of having LCDC and to be able to make quick decisions. The other thing that's kind of confused us on the LCDC side is LCDC is like the marketing and the project communication arm of the Port Authority. There's really no deal making. LCDC can't make any of these deals. We can't extend incentives. We can't do any of the, I guess, real meat of the economic development work, anyway. And you have representatives on the, on the Port Authority currently.
Well, really, it's about communication. I think that's been the problem.
But the communication is on the part, to me, of the municipalities versus the, and you know that we don't agree on the LCDC's...
Representative.
Representative. We do not agree in any way, shape, or form. And that's been, that's kind of, that's on the record. So, I think that...
Well, occasionally, you're wrong.
Well, occasionally, you are, too. But Vernon...
Excuse me. I know that this is a hot topic and I know that we all have extremely busy lives, things that we have to get to. So, if we can get more focused on what our intent was, which was to really look at the funding for Port Authority. I've been blessed, commissioners, to be a member of the Port Authority for many, many years and was appointed first by the commission and then second by the city that I reside in. But it is important that as I look over that 10 years, you know, what the Port Authority funding has allowed the county to do, has allowed other partnerships to do. And that is, when we look at things like the Tonganoxie Park, when we look at the things like Leavenworth Park that we, Business Park, those things don't happen without the Port Authority putting forth its best foot, trying to negotiate with people, trying to make sure that we are utilizing taxpayers' dollars to the best of our abilities. It does also require us to have marketing. So, there's no way that we can go without LCDC. I understand that LCDC is a whole nother thing, but we're here to talk about, you know, where are we going with the funding for the Port Authority? And I don't mean to take over my chair's position, so I'm going to turn it over...
So far, I've been able to...
So, I'm going to turn it over to my chair.
Well, first of all, Vicki, thank you for bringing that up. And we got right to some of the meat and potatoes of the whole process. But that's not necessarily the whole process. The purpose of this conversation was for us as the Port Authority, all of us volunteers, well, yeah, even though there's a volunteer there, too, from LCDC. Where are we going to be next year, the year after, 10 years from now? Not necessarily tomorrow. And what I would like to start with is Tom, I told him I was going to pick on him, but he put together a nice sheet, and I think you've all seen that, of trying what I call pillars of economic development in the county. And the theory of the pillars, we try to segment duties and make sure we're not replicating the same thing and wasting efficiencies and different things like that. And it was a great start. How do we, as a Port Authority, who go up and volunteer once a month, and I've probably been up there 10 times this month, what are, what's your insight for the long term for what we control or what? And I don't know that it's colored on formally anywhere. Y'all remember Tom's sheet, right? Well done, split up nicely. There's probably some things that Tom would add and I don't want to speak for him. A few things that I would jot in a pencil and say, you know, cash incentives to companies that are coming, industrial companies that are providing jobs, things like that, who's responsible for that. It's always been, I think, the Port Authority historically. We could add a few things, but in general, this is a nice roadmap. So, what does that roadmap look like over the next 1, 3, 5, 10 years? I know if you're not on the commission, you can't have a say in that 5 years from now. I totally understand that, being on the city council and being 2 more years and I'm out.
Congratulations.
So, 17, 18, 19 years.
You've done great.
So, where do you want us to go? How do you want us to deploy our resources? We have resources. I would not call it in abundance. If you look at the budgets of Lawrence, if you look at the budgets of Alath, I sat on the Alatha board for 10 years, and how much they get funded, wind-up county, the funding and all that, we don't have resources compared to what they're throwing at us. And we understand that. They're different worlds. But not so different as we grow and we start to catch them. And so, where are we going? Where do you want us to go? And if so, how do we get there? We have to throw in the monetary piece of it because we have zero expenses outside of mowing a couple of industrial parks, outside of paying for staff and an office and computers, bathrooms. That's what LCDC provides for us. We don't have anything else because we don't have any other overhead. We don't want to create overhead. We think that's inefficient. But as you look down the list, if you, and if you really just take 2/3, Tom's part is Leavenworth Government, then the Development Authority, or Development Corporation is the Port Authority. What are the expectations? Where do we go? I don't think if we have anything set, we don't, we just wander aimlessly. I think setting a plan, a long-term economic development plan is really important and this group wants to do that. And part of that plan is establishing a sound funding base. And how do we do that, too?
And I asked for that a year ago, to see if there could be some alternative funding or different ways to fund, you know, whether it's a business you bring in and you get the taxes for so many years or some kind of a program like that. Because you turned in a budget this year. You obviously went through that. You needed that money. You had a purpose for that money, but there's no way we could just raise the mill levy to give you that money. But we've got to come up with something else to subsidize the, other than the county.
Doug, I think that's why we're here today, is to try to start. And I don't think we'll expect to finish anything today.
Right, but I asked for it to start a year ago.
Agreed. And I remember you asking for it. It's just a matter of, at the same time, I think you brought Tom on and Tom did this, which is great footprint to start. Now that we have it, I think this is where we're at. You've got to remember, we're all volunteers here.
Right.
So, we operate at the pace of how fast I can get up.
I mean, would there be an option that, you know, we could help you out, that maybe we could move some of your offices into the Cushing Building, help on your rent or anything?
I don't know what that is, so I mean, I'm not sure what the Cushing Building is.
That's the hospital, the old hospital that the county purchased?
The whole building.
Yeah. A couple of points, I don't know, it's, you know, if you're aware, but the mill levy that the county takes for economic development, that's the only mill levy that we didn't touch. And the amount of funding for economic development actually went up $40,000. Mark, is that, did I get the number right? 40,000? Because we left that mill levy flat and the revenue from that actually increased towards economic development. We didn't change it downward at all during the budget process this year. So, Tom's working, and you guys, I'm sure you're aware, but if you're not, Tom's working on an economic development plan for the county and then hopefully to segment what the roles are for everybody and to kind of, and hopefully we'll all work together to establish what those roles are, what LCDC does, what Port Authority does, what the county's role is. And I know he's working on that right now and I hope that LCDC folks are working together with him and being communicated. Part of what he's already done is created an incentive plan of guidelines for the county. When we're going to offer incentives, we now have guidelines for that. So, that's something we didn't have before. So, one thing that Mr. Lawfree asked in one of these work sessions, I believe, or maybe a general session, was, is there a possibility that LCDC or the Port Authority, when you get a major project, that a percent could be extracted from the developer? Is that, you know, within the, within the process of bringing them in, if you get a half percent or 1 percent? I don't know, I don't know how that's typically handled, but that's a possibility for raising additional revenue.
And I think those are the things that were, I can't give you an answer from my perspective today without sitting down and thinking through how that would work, without looking at the math, without going to the Wichita State studies that we run on these things to make, how do they work? How do they financially repay the taxpayer, basically, if we're going to give taxpayer money? But I think that is a methodology that we need to explore. And we've talked about that more than once at the board level, is what is a logical means of funding the Port Authority? Now, not economic development, because I don't know that we should be over here telling in this column that we're county government. Are we typically not telling them what to do? We're trying to do what we are tasked.
We're sure there's supposed to be a team.
And the underlying or the bottom, these are pillars, but you've got to have a good foundation pillar. What is it? Trying to develop that foundation, trying to develop within our lane where we're supposed to be. And I think cooperation is really important, you know, especially to go back in the last few months where we, I think every entity in the county cooperated on the traffic study or the transportation study. The support we added, all those things, that was outstanding. And I think we made an impact. When we get away from that, we don't make near the impact, that type of cooperation and collaboration.
And we need to continue that.
And we're trying to do the same thing on an industrial park right now. This, the Port Authority, as a group, that working with LCDC to find an additional industrial park space. And that's working, but it's going to take time. Once we do that, what do we do with it? What do we do with that? If we find somewhere in Lansing or Leavenworth or in the middle of the county or wherever, what do we do with it? Well, we need to cement all those types of things in and not necessarily cement because the world changes. I get off the council and somebody else comes on and they make decisions. That's just what happens in politics. I mean, at the end of the days, if you're over here forever, that's one thing. If you're here for a year, that's another thing. But at least try to develop that foundation. And so, and we've had good comments from Commissioner Smith about we need to come up with a plan. I think we can work through that. Now, it would be easier to work with you than it is to throw something out and let, just keep throwing things out until something sticks. But, you know, as we work through those, putting it down to where the next group of people on this board and on this board can say, this is what the plan is. This is what the long-term goals are. Here's the sound funding mechanism, whatever it may be. So, I think hearing from you today, this helped me go a little bit farther to understand what I need to do. I know you said that before and I heard it, but it's just a matter of then as a volunteer, I got to, how much time am I going to spend on that versus take care of what I have to take care of?
I understand and I agree with you. And I just, I just can't emphasize enough how much I appreciate that you do volunteer your time to do a very complicated and difficult task. And, you know, I have tried my best since I've been here, and I only have a year left, but to champion the Port Authority and to also work toward creating, you know, a better relationship with the LCDC. I mean, that has been, that was one of the goals that I set for myself 5 years ago. I just, I just want you to understand that there was not the intent, and I don't think it was intended by the Board of County Commissioners to leave the impression that we were going to defund the Port Authority, because that certainly wasn't mine. I think budget hearings can be very contentious. They can be very, you know, and it's very transparent. So, you can see that we don't always, you know, we don't always, we're not always on the same sheet of music. But the beauty of it is that we do vote and then we do have a majority. And when we have a majority vote, we do our best then to support each other once that vote has been taken. And so, we are moving in this direction. When I found out that there were concerns with the Port Authority, I wanted to, you know, make sure that we try to resolve that because I don't like hearing about that type of concern in a separate meeting when I'm caught completely off-guard because I had no idea those questions were out, that there was a feeling that we were going to defund the Port Authority. And I also want to say, and I don't know that Commissioner Stevens even agrees with me, but when we do give the money to the Port Authority, which is the way that the majority of the board made a decision, that's how they wanted to proceed rather than fund directly to the LCDC, we trust that you make the decision that is in the best interest of Leavenworth County and the money that is being spent, that the money that you give to the LCDC is the best way and best investment that you can make in doing, in serving the role in the capacity that you have. That's just, that's my opinion as a commissioner. I trust that when you decide that that's how you want to do the funding, that that's the best way that the funding can be spent. Because I, otherwise, I would not have appointed the members that I appointed to the board. And I certainly believe Basar Phil is the same way, Tonganoxie, that, you know, we're putting our trust in you, which is why I said, we consider you to be our voice of the government, governing arm of that whole part of the system.
Madam Chairperson, not that I wanted to take away from my, from my chair again...
Never stop you, Vernon. Nobody ever...
Vernon, I know that.
We, I truly appreciate hearing that. And as Mr. Stevens, Commissioner Stevens has said, we do have to look at communication. I remember there were very few opportunities that we had to really kind of share with the county board of commissioners, but we, I value this. And whenever we do that, we come back renewed. We come back looking at the fact that we know that you all trust us to do the right thing with the taxpayers' dollars. And I guarantee you that everybody up here that's volunteering their time, they're doing that on behalf of trying to make the very best decision. There aren't any undercutting things. It's so important for me, whenever I go down and represent either the county or the city of Basar at the American Regional Council, I talk about some of the amazing things that the Port Authority is doing and making sure that people understand that this august body right here is focusing on getting things done for the county and not just their specific, you know, identity. It, you know, funding is always going to be a concern and we do, well, we, I'm sorry. I ask that if there are ways that we can increase our funding, to please do. I do believe that my chair here is going to look at exploring different ways that we can maximize monies or obtain monies because this is an important part. I remember one time people referred to the Port Authority as an advisory committee. And I value that because we do want to advise the county on where we're at and what we're doing. That's that communication piece. And at that, I'm going to go and turn it back over to my chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Stevens.
Couple of things on the communication part. We had, I think, 3 days of budget hearings, I can't remember, you know, full days. And we didn't have any representation from the Port Authority or the LCDC attending the budget hearings, making statements at the budget hearings. It would have been helpful if you had attended, I think, to bring some of these concerns to the commissioners. And I would encourage you during the next budget process to be present because that, you know, just sending a letter and asking for $500,000 doesn't, when we're in a really contentious, I mean, the budget is really hard. This is not, the taxpayers are not happy with what's going on with taxes and what is happening out here. So, every dime that comes out of the taxpayers' coffer, we have to look very, very closely at where that's going. And I want to give a compliment to Lisa and Tom for working together so closely. They have, I think that is going to be the key moving forward, is getting them working together and keeping the process. I think, I think it's really important. I also want to compliment Tonganoxie. Look at Tonganoxie. When I came on the Board of Commissioners, that industrial park was almost empty. And there's no community in this county that has made the progress like Tonganoxie. And they should get a lot of credit. And the council down there, the mayor, everybody that has worked, the LCDC, the Port Authority, anybody involved, and Lisa, anybody that was involved in the process. We went and took the tour of the hills, pet nutrition. That is a huge, huge win for Leavenworth County. And credit, give credit to who credit goes to, you know. It's all you guys that helped to get that in here. That's just tremendous. It's going to benefit the county tremendously, even if the dog does fall off the stage. I don't know how many of you attended the... So, if you can come to the budget hearings, make your, express your views. I think that is part of the communication. Tom and Lisa working together. And also, at the next industrial park, I think, the Port Authority. And more communication with you guys that represent the county. You know, we met with you once. I think we need to make that a more periodic, regular schedule of meetings so that you can represent some of the things that you're hearing from us more directly. Because I think, I think what, what part of the problem is the communication. Because we are, if everybody's on a different page, then it's not working. And we're not always on the same page. Mr. Cause and I are 90%. But...
You were good at math, weren't you?
Heck, don't we tell you 95?
Well, I can show you the votes. They're usually 5 to 0 around here.
Yeah. I'm just letting you know that we, we just want, or I for certain, wanted to make sure that you understood that in no way was there the intent to leave you with the impression that you were going to be unfunded or that you were not appreciated because not, from my point of view, neither could be further from the truth. And that as long as the next year and a couple of months that I'm sitting at this table, I will still be behind the Port Authority. Because I think there's so many things, and what you were talking about, we can't be short-sighted. We can't look at just this year, next year. We have to look down the road. And the potential for what our Port Authority can accomplish in the next decade, I think for Leavenworth County is going to be amazing. I think that Tom gave us a forecast at a meeting recently that really talks about the growth that is going to be experienced in the short term, not the long-distance future, but pretty, that we have to prepare for. Some of the things that, you know, for me, we've got to start beginning to look at some of the other issues of multimodal, that meaning our rail, like, and river systems and things that we do have right here that we need to begin to explore and take advantage of, which is not necessarily anything to do with the Development Corporation and the immediacy, but it certainly applies to our Port Authority. And looking at what we can do and how we can accomplish those things, I know that, you know, there are things that we have talked about, taking advantage of the position that we are actually at. And, you know, that's down the road, but those are things that we have to look at. And so, we have to have you. We need you and we don't want you going anywhere. And I have no intention, as a commissioner, and I certainly hope that the Board of County Commissioners now and in the future really do value what we have in having a Port Authority in our state.
You know, just a couple of things. I agree with looking at funding mechanism. We need to really look at that. There's been some things thrown out in the last couple of years. of years. But one thing that really concerned me is that, folks, just like, you know, I've been the mayor, past city manager forever, when you got a budget meeting, you show up. That's just all there is to it. Because two things happens. First of all, you may convince us that this is the way, path we need to go. The other thing is, this county, this board there has been working so hard, whether legislators admit it or not, to get some things changed on property tax, on sales tax, and things like that. And what that means, and it'll probably take a vote, and what it means the next couple of years, is hopefully there'll be a lot more funds flowing into the county that can help go after projects. We have so many bridges we're trying to fix right now, because we got so far behind. And I think we've been three or four this year. But I'm not going to, I'm not defunding anything, but I would suggest very strong, the next budget hearing, somebody comes out and represents you, because we need to work together on these things that we've got coming. Leavenworth County is the last one metropolitan area, I believe, is getting ready to kick off and just take. We'll probably see it down south. We're going to continue seeing it everywhere else, and especially industrial parks. So, communication, but make sure you have to meet next budget hearing.
I think we need to set up regular, more regular meetings than once a year to show, just to, you know, and to have, you have to say, hey, let's talk about what's going on here. I think that we need to, you know, I mean, I know that, that I try my best to sit in and listen to the Port Authority meetings and, and to the LCDC. And that's one of the reasons that I kind of went, whoa, 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 what's going on here, is because we have a Commissioner that sits in, and we also have staff that sits in on those meetings, and they get back with us and report back to us. But we need to hear directly from you. I did not, I didn't, I don't know about, you know, I had a conversation finally, ultimately, with, with Greg, when he gave me a ride to the, the meeting that we had for the transportation, or whatever it's called, I can't remember what it's called now. You know, he gave me a ride, and then we were talking about it, and he said, well, I had those, and I'm like, wow, I had no idea that that was what the feeling of, you know, was of the, of the Port Authority. And so, we need to have those conversations, and we need to have communication. And you need to feel free to reach out to the Board of County Commissioners, and to let us know when you have those concerns, or ideas, or inspiration, or anything, you know. We all have, I think we're all listed on the internet, where you can get in contact with us. If you don't have our business cards, they're all sitting right there, and you're welcome to go in after the meeting and collect one, because our phone numbers are on all of those. And you are welcome to contact, I know of me, and, and I am certain that the other Commissioners agree that, and I know that Lisa has reached out to me in the past, but I have to know in advance. I can't, I don't like, nobody likes to be surprised. I don't think you like to be surprised either. So it's kind of like, let's, let's communicate. Let's communicate.
I will gladly eat crow for not showing up to the budget. You won't put that on anybody but me. That's my responsibility.
Next time, you'll have the full board.
And so, don't blame it on bail for me. I'll take that responsibility. I think that this has been very helpful for us to hear, or at least for me to hear. And there's a lot of things, I've taken a lot of notes, there's lots of points, I think will be helpful in the long run. I'd like to kind of work through just a few, and I didn't expect to solve the world's problems in one half an hour work session, but to start to work some steps that we can take, step one to step two maybe, to start working through this. And I think, continuing work with Tom on the development of an overall strategy that comes through the county as a foundation, but then keeps the pillars, whatever you want to call those, I don't use that word, could I use it? So we can clearly identify that. Work on a funding mechanism that is long-term, not what's going to happen at this next budget cycle, next, over time. I think somewhere in there, we have to work as a Port Authority member and from, appointed by Tonganoxi, we need to somehow include a step in there with, how do we work with the other partners, with Lansing, Leavenworth, Basar, Tonganoxi? How do we, how do we infiltrate them into this process? How do we drag them in, or push them in? Or maybe they'll jump in. I don't know. I think they have to be in there somewhere. So that'd be part of one of these steps. And then come back and start to work through and try to get, get some more detail in those steps. Is that reasonable? And that's Chris's opinion. And it's, whatever you guys board the decision, it's not a Chris decision. Ever is. So, go ahead.
Chris, I think that's, I think that's great. I think we need to set up a separate committee on funding or whatever, and any of the county Commissioners would be welcome to be part of that.
And I'd be more than willing to sit in on that with you.
One thing I'd like to throw out, and I'll probably get through some time, that's okay. What does a bill generate in Leavenworth County?
A million dollars.
A million dollars, I believe.
And it'll be a million next year.
According to state statute, the Port Authority does have the ability to assess bill. But it has to be with the permission of the sponsoring agency.
I think it started out that way.
I think it started out that way. What would the feeling of the commission be if we were to vote a, vote to the people in November, I'd say a half a mill, to fund Leavenworth County Port Authority for economic development and let the citizens vote on?
Well, you know, I would be 100 percent behind that type of action, because I think that that's.
And the rest of them too.
I mean, I know that we have to give consent for that type of thing to go on to a ballot, but then that does.
What are we talking about?
Like in a year.
It wouldn't be a mail-in ballot, it'd be just a regular election.
Either April or November next year.
Yeah.
We're going to have a ballot in November, definitely.
But I don't think.
It'd be a big election that year, wouldn't it?
Well, but to have something that's placed on the ballot for the taxpayers to decide, they can thumbs up or thumbs down. I mean, that's, that's a reasonable.
That's voters. That's no different than a school bond.
Right. I don't think that that's unreasonable. And Greg, I think that would be something, I don't know about the rest of the Commissioners. I, you know, I don't have to worry about being reelected, so everybody would be mad at me for doing this.
Is there a specific project? I mean, I would think that if I was going to support putting something on the ballot, that we have a specific project towards economic development, like development of an industrial park, or a specific project, because you're going to get, when the voters go to the polls, and they just see a general statement, economic development, but if they know what they're going to get, and I also hope that, I hope that you're focused on, when the next industrial park comes, that we're going to have rail access. That's what I would hope.
But we need to look at the, I mean, that's looking at and studying the language, and making sure the language is appropriate, and that it fully and completely identifies exactly what that, the purpose of that is.
I think that's a great idea, do it similar to the sales tax. If you pass this, these are the things you're going to get.
I think you're going to more likely to get the voters to say yes.
Right. But that's what I said, but that's what we need to, but I don't have a problem with that.
And they voted on the sales tax that funded these industrial parks, because unlike you, I was, came on the board, it was, that industrial park was being farmed. There was nothing in there. And with the sales tax, we bonded $10 million for the $5 million here in Leavenworth, $5 million in Tonganoxi, and I was a huge supporter of that.
You just need to have somebody that's, that's going to champion the initiative and the ballot question.
And honestly, I was hoping that maybe the return on investment could help fund the Board Authority. And, you know, something like that.
It is a lot of work, that's why I said.
In this conversation, there's a lot of detail and strategy, and, and again, part of this meeting is to start working. I don't expect to finish it.
But if you have this committee.
But you can establish a committee to look at it and study it.
If you're talking industrial park, you're funding so many jobs, I don't know.
All right.
We need to come up with that thing.
A spur, you know.
There are different things that are important to this county.
Rail's probably huge.
Which was why I was talking about multimodal type things. I'm just saying, things that we could look at, and that's, that's a way of trying to find some of the funding for it. But we need to, you're going to have to form a committee to do it.
Right.
And, you know, and it is not.
If you're totally against it.
No.
I don't want to waste my time.
But I think, I think rail is huge, and even in the southern part of the county. You know, we have that strip of land down there, it's all zoned industrial.
We know someone we could get on that committee for rail, don't we?
Might be a collective interest, but, you know.
Well, I think having a committee is a great idea. I mean, and the communication, I think, I think we're actually making progress, and I think, I think misinformation was that, we actually increased economic development funding this year.
At the Port Authority.
I know, but we increased it. So, so when the words put out that we cut it, I think, you know, and I think that those monies, we're all on board with economic development. We just want to see, have the communication and have the plan. And we'll, we'll work together.
But do we have a consensus that we want to look into and explore and examine? Are you willing to help lead that, Greg?
Well, they can go back in the committee and tell us who's going to lead it.
I've, I've worked on something like that.
The Board will take that challenge on.
And, and we can, that's something that we can task you to kind of look at, because I, you know, when we said we want you to accept some of the responsibility of how do we get some funding to the Port Authority, well, we have two options now that you can kind of look at and examine. And I think that, is there a consensus that we're agreeable to having that looked at? Commissioner Culerson?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I think it's a good idea about.
I am.
That's.
Commissioner Smith? Okay, well, have we got that? Yeah?
I do have one question for the Port Authority, for Mr. Donnelly. We have this gigantic, enormous development that's happening down in DeSoto. And I know that the Douglas County Economic Development folks have a separate committee dealing with Panasonic. And we have leveraged some of our, some of our county folks have, have been discussing with Commerce, and we've gotten some resources for Golden Road, a couple of bridges to be improved, getting some infrastructure money into Leavenworth County, because we're going to be impacted tremendously by that development. Is Port Authority or LCDC have any consideration of maybe having a, a separate type of entity to just, or maybe a committee to deal with just the Panasonic impact on Leavenworth County?
We've had, we've been attending the quarterly meetings that the state of Kansas puts on. I think right now, it's just kind of a fact-finding mission. With as many potential improvements that could happen from KDOT, it's kind of hard to know, you know, they, they do the extension from I-35 all the way up into Leavenworth County. Well, that is going to change things considerably. That's going to change things considerably. So we don't have a standalone committee specifically, but we're certainly aware of the going on.
Have you visited with the economic development folks in Douglas County as to how they're leveraging that?
Well, I do, they are, I see them at several events that I go to in Kansas City. And as Jeremy said, we're attending those things, meeting that you guys are, the Department of Commerce. What we're being told by them.
Stop for a second. Please come to where we can, sorry.
Thank you. Forget that.
So, we are, as, just like you all, we're going to those quarterly meetings with the Department of Commerce. And as we've been instructed as a community, we should be ready to respond. So we are absolutely ready to respond to any project possibilities. I just would say, you know, kudo, I'm just grateful to see that you guys are continuing to stay involved in that, because I think that's important, as you've seen already. But other than that, I haven't, that's what instruction we're getting, is just to stand ready, be ready to respond, and we are.
I just think you should talk to Douglas County and, and see what they're doing. Maybe we can integrate that into what we're doing.
And you are 100 percent correct. I, in my past life, I was a banker, but I'm a developer and home builder. Hopefully, I can get out of that mess, too. I just sold a house. I had three people that showed up, and the Commissioner Caus has heard this already, but the three people that came in and made offers the first day it was for sale, all three of them from out of state, all three of them were working at Panasonic plant. And they are, two of them I know for sure were electricians. I talked to them myself. And they're all coming to work. And so, the three that got in line first, we're already seeing that benefit. And I don't know what that means.
Means all of our house prices are going to go up.
That's exactly right.
But those are things.
But they're coming, and they're going to spend money, hopefully, in our town.
Oh, yeah.
And they're going to spend, and hopefully they'll pay their taxes, which I assume are pretty good jobs. And one of them, the wife was a big exec for, actually, when they purchased the house, was a big exec for Casey's. So they make plenty of money, and they're going to spend money in our communities. And I think that impact, and I think what you're saying, is something that, keep in mind that we have no staff, and we're working with LCDC to support that, but it's going to be a big impact over the next three to five years.
So you're saying the Port Authority needs to get involved with housing?
I hope not. That's all.
Seems to be where the money's at. That's economic.
Well, I think Vernon had something he wanted to say.
I had the ability about a week or two ago to meet with the mayor of DeSoto, and then I spent Monday and Tuesday in DeSoto, really looking at, you know, that impact of how the Panasonic plant is going to impact us, and is going to, is going to have that impact. And I took 158th Street to get all the way out there, so I know what you guys are talking about.
On a bicycle?
Oh, no, no, no. I drove a car. But I just want to kind of circle back, you know, and I know that we've been in for a while, but, you know, I'm just, I'm not saying I'm ready to leave, but I'm trying to say, yeah, I want to be mindful of people's time.
Right.
You know, we covered quite a few things today, and I know that my chair here, you know, has a great list. But I want to circle back to an item that's on your County Board of Commissioner's regular agenda, and that is item number eight, where it talks about presentations and discussion items. And if there's a way that we as a Port Authority can again, present to you guys, you know, that that's a built-in, it's a built-in spot.
Absolutely.
We don't have to do it quarterly, you know, I'm speaking way out of turn right now, because I hadn't spoken with my chair, but maybe we can be placed on a docket for, for every six months, so we can give you guys an update, everybody an update, so we can enhance again, that communication component.
Quarterly, I mean, there's a lot of stuff.
Quarterly, I mean, you don't, you could, don't have to necessarily have the chair. You could have any, any member, or anyone representing, just to come and give a quick quarterly, if there's anything. And if there's nothing, then you don't get put on for that quarter, because there's nothing to report. But I think that a quarterly report probably would be.
That's a good idea.
Would be a good thing.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. I just didn't want to over, besides, this is my last week in office anyway, so we're not sure if I'm going to be reelected, so there might be a new member here. I just wanted to put that information out, so that as we go with the next, you know, next time we meet, maybe we can look at meeting quarterly, to enhance and achieve that one objective of.
Communication.
Enhance communications. And I got to turn it back over to my chair.
I will be conscious of your time, and I don't have anything else.
Do any of you others have something you'd like to?
No, I mean, I think, you know, Doug and I are the Leavenworth County appointed representatives, and, and, you know, I'm, look, I'm cattle rancher, and sometimes I'll, I'll catch on to a lot of buzzwords, and I hear, you know, we need to communicate better. And I'm glad that we're coming up with some, some concrete, like, okay, we'll communicate better. What do we want that to be? Do we want, like?
I think you need to see you guys more often. I think that's one.
Yeah, and I mean, if, if what we need to do is, is the quarterly updates, you know, then that can be something that.
They could actually do the quarterly.
Well, if they have the time. But otherwise, I mean, there's a whole, there's a group, and it's a team. And I think that their communications and things are all a team effort, I hope, and so.
And I do believe that, based on the commitment, you know, I'm a volunteer member of this board, but yet I still reached out and spoke to the mayor of DeSoto, still went out and did work on behalf of information that the Port Authority can use. So, so you got an extremely talented, motivated group here that, that can do things together, and maybe, maybe he might do the presentation, or I might do the presentation, but, but none of us up here, and I know people hear me say this before, none of us up here are shy.
I thought you were shy.
We're going to take care of our business. We're going to, we're going to represent this board. We're going to do our best job in making sure that the taxpayers' dollars are used as appropriately as possible.
And I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
I think it makes a really important point. We get excited, whether it be the city commission, county commission, anybody, even on the phone, if that's the best I can do, we actually show up at meetings. I get excited when I hear about that, because then they can actually see what we're doing in that meeting. It's not behind closed doors. It's open to anybody that wants to come in, for good sakes, so they can see what's going on. And for some of the businesses that we deal with, come in and make presentation, they're willing to sit in and listen to how we discuss it, too, so they understand why it was acceptable or unacceptable, and everything like that. Why? We don't try to hide anything. We're volunteers. We live in a community. As far as the time required by pharmacists here in town, I had to make some arrangements just to get here today.
Right. Right.
So, I don't put my patients at risk. Those will always come first, I'm sorry.
And I understand, that's why I said, anyone, anyone that, you know, just if they're, if they're, you know, if we know that it's a specific day and quarter and whatever, that we just, with the number of people that have been appointed, surely there's somebody, and if not, then you can ask your staff to make the presentation if you don't happen to have a, a specific member. But normally, you know, we can do something, I think, and so, that's just my two cents.
And it wouldn't hurt for you guys, the representatives of the county, occasionally to get together with the commissioners and Tom, and kind of, you know, everybody on the same page.
And, 'cause I'm not shy either, and...
No, she's not.
Mr. Smith had something.
On this land search for the next industrial park, is this something that the Port Authority would own? Is that what we're looking at?
We don't know that yet. We, we, part of the conversation included in the, in the search is to, how do we own it? Who controls it? How do you gain control of it? And I think to try to say that, it, it may be, but it may not be. I don't know that...
Well, the Port Authority's quasi-government, you could own it, you could borrow the money, and then we could figure out how to fund and make the payments, and that may be a ballot question, or sure it would have to be a ballot question. And then also, would the Port Authority say, let's just say it's in the southern part of the county, to, to maybe catch the overflow from DeSoto, would the Port Authority then write letters of support if the county would apply for grant funding to upgrade the roads in this, in that area?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's very good.
That is on, that is one of the items that we're working through, is how do we pay for it? Do we fund it? Does a city fund it? Does the county fund it? Does, do we create a group to fund? We don't know that answer, but it is...
Well, if we're talking about going out on a ballot question, I, you know...
You know, Commissioner Caus is a representative for the Port Authority and LCDC, but obviously, any of the four of you are also willing to attend. I mean, you can coordinate, remind yourselves, or Mr. Lawfery on, so you don't have to quorum, but maybe you guys would wanna attend once every two or three months.
And then also, how much property does the Port Authority have right now?
Three lots, and Carlson, and...
Five.
Five, well, we...
It has, it has five?
Total acreage is not very much.
Right, it's...
They're small.
It's been a few days, yeah.
They're small.
Yeah, it's gone down.
Certainly get lean.
And the usable land in the Leavenworth Park, you gotta be a little bit careful with that, 'cause some of that's not, you can't...
And we have somebody looking at the...
...slope and how it will...
Gary Carlson Park is being looked at right now, which is an awesome thing, so...
So, what do you have left in urban house? Three?
Five.
You have five, and they are, what, small acreage?
One of, the largest one is four acres.
You have a four-acre one left?
Four acres on one, and one on something else.
Are they together, where you could join them?
Some of them are.
Two of them are.
Two can be joined, I, we need to make sure that Lisa can be heard, so that's why I'm repeating.
Okay.
In the, the four acre, the largest tract in Tongan and Oxy splits another tract that joins it with water. I mean, there's a, it comes through the county, comes underneath County Road 5 or Tongan and Oxy Road, and it moves a lot of water from the northwest, so you really, if you put them together, you have to figure out how to get across them.
Yeah, there's been discussions of that in the Port Authority meetings, as a matter of fact.
Oh, well, I'm just saying, you know, we've got several special use permits in the county that, you know, are outgrowing their area. Anybody, do people reach out to you that are there, or do we need to tell them to reach out to them?
Right, there is one now, that's why I said, it's, it's exciting. There's one that they're working on right now that is outgrown, their special use permit, which is really cool.
But I think, I think we, you guys are probably more aware, I have had a longer history, we have to remember, and I think Gary Carlson Park was donated to us originally, was it not, all those years ago?
I believe that that's correct.
That helps, you know, so any land that we look at now...
You have to purchase.
...for an industrial park, you're gonna have to purchase, market is not friendly.
No.
That's not money, I say that, I tease these guys occasionally, and one of the reasons I wanted to be on this committee was because one of the things we get asked for constantly is buildings that are already up, and, you know, that's difficult to do, too. All these things are very expensive, things are well beyond the budget considerations of the Port Authority, which last year LCDC or anything like that. That's what's gonna take in the future, will be a commitment for the counties and cities to buy land, or to put up buildings. And I know it's just a couple of some, once, we got lots of guys talking about buildings downtown and everything, but that's not really what we're talking about when we talk about the industrial actions, like, whether the chicken plant that was defeated, whether it be the successful heels plant, we need to have an industrial park big enough, we're talking about...
To accommodate it.
Buildings, but then if we had to, we could dice up, but we have to have the funding, that's incredible amount of funding. I could loan for that, about half a million dollars.
Well, Jeff, how many of those buildings that you looked at were larger-sized buildings? Not, not very many? Mostly, like, how many square feet?
Ninety-five percent of them were just small.
Like, 10,000 square feet or less?
Yep.
So...
Lisa could tell you the numbers, there she is, and the requests, and all of them range, the smallest range is generally 50,000 minimum, up to 200,000.
And we never have anything to be able to, you know, Lisa has to say, thank you for, for, you know, the inquiry, but, but we do not have anything to show you, so that's, that's one of the difficulties, and...
And so, we keep track of those requests, so we can kind of see that we've had more requests in the last two years than the previous time, timeframes.
That's why I think it's important that the Port Authority owns the next industrial park.
Well, but that's, that's where we can now have another discussion, and, 'cause we've been tasked with trying to look at how to pay for things, and how to look at potentially a question, ballot question, and I think, if there's nobody that has anything else...
I was just gonna add to what Greg said. When we were doing the budget hearings, I, I will say that the, the Port Authority and the LC, I mean, that funding was lumped into outside agencies. So, maybe in the future, when we're doing our budget process, there's a couple of items I don't think should be considered, like Guidance Center, I don't think that should be considered an outside agency, 'cause it's a, it's something that's contractually required. So, that should come out of outside agencies, and maybe our economic development should come out of outside agencies, and be separately handled.
That's probably a good idea, and that, but see, that's something that we need to look at and, and consider as we move forward in our budgeting process.
Right.
But I'm not wanting to take it. Lisa, did you have something else?
Just one last thing, I just wanted to speak for LCDC, I know this is before, for, between the Board of County Commission and the Port Authority, but as you all use us, I just want you to know, thank you for, for spending this time with us, and I've learned a lot, but I just want you to know that what we're doing is helping to spread the tax base. That's our main focus at LCDC, and so, we are a tool for you, so please know that we're, that is our mission. We are working very hard to help spread that tax base, and to help you.
Do we have any numbers on that?
Yes.
She can get that.
As far as...
As far as, is that...
We, we keep track of our, our impact over the last five years.
Yes.
I have something, if you would like, I, I made copies for everybody, just to show you kind of a...
Go right ahead, Lisa, go ahead. Sure.
Pass it out?
Okay.
Can I approach?
Yes. Uh-huh. We're pretty informal. So, we have put together, Diana and I have been working very hard to make sure that
every number in here, we can prove we have had some kind of direct involvement. If you'll see over the last five years, is...
We do have this on here.
You'll have this. You'll see.
Before you start, can I just say, keep up the social media on this, because the constituents out in there, they need to know what you're doing, and, 'cause you're doing a lot of good things, but, but, but we, the commissioners, I mean, we're hearing from people, why are you doing this? Why are you funding this? Why are you funding this? The, the more you do on social media with these kind of things, is great.
I'm grateful for my team that's really pushing that.
Okay, is there anything else?
We've done enough. Mike, you didn't have anything to say.
Well, have we answered your concerns, addressed your concerns? Jeremy, are you okay with what you've heard? Everybody, are we all?
Yeah, I think we've got some good direction.
Okay, and so, then we'll be back together in a quarter.
You bet.
Thank you, folks.
Appreciate it.
But feel free to reach out in between.